Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022 at 7:00 PM at O'Neill Middle School. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the District 58's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis.
Here.
Member Hannah.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Oldman.
Here.
Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hugh.
Here. Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to comment to please fill out a card and indicate the topic to be addressed. These can be placed in the basket over there, next to Megan Hewitt. Cards are there as well. I have allotted 30 minutes for public comment tonight. All right. Tonight, we're going to start off with a pledge of allegiance and a school report. We have Whittier School here with us today, so I'd like to welcome Principal Kurgman.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask our student council to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to present the pledge of allegiance, as well as to share a little bit about Whittier with all of you. Our first slide there is our first day of school this year, which was an awesome day back. We were surprised with a little "Welcome Back Whittier" sign in front of the school, so classes were able to come and take pictures throughout the day. We had our staff picture taken as well, so that's just our little intro there for you guys. I'm now going to call up our student council advisors, as well as our student council members, to just do a little bit of informational presentation on what Whittier Student Council is all about.
We are some of the officers of the Whittier School Student Council. Thank you for inviting us this evening to share a little bit about what we do at Whittier.
We are the sponsors or advisors of the Whittier Student Council. I'm Jenna Smithley.
And I'm Eric Miller.
I am Harper, and I am student council president.
I am Benny, and I'm student council vice president.
I am Max, and I am secretary.
I am Caroline, and I am student council service chairperson.
I am Peyton, and I am student council spirit.
Service learning is a huge part of our role at Whittier.
We also love having fun and showing our school pride. So spirit is the second part of our role at Whittier. We usually have spirit days every Wednesday. Last year, we had PJ Days, March Day, college, and many more.
Want to move the mic down a little bit? Thanks. There we go.
Here are some of our pictures of our "Just Like a Teacher" Spirit Day from last year. These students chose to dress like our principal, Mr. Kurgman.
Providing aid to charities is always a focus each school year.
Each year when we run for office, we choose a charity to support. Our campaign speeches highlight our selected charity, describing the help that is needed and how our Whittier School students can assist. These are charities that we are able to help with.
Fundraisings throughout the year helps provide the money that we send to our selected charities. Examples of fundraisers we've held in the past includes apple tacos, apples, candy canes, pencils, and more. These events are always a huge hit with Whittier students.
Finally, we honor the Whittier teachers and staff during Teacher Appreciation Week. We look forward to providing them with something this May.
Thank you very much for letting us share about the Whittier Student Council. We are excited to start planning spirit days and community service projects.
And at this time, we have one of our PTA co-presidents, Maggie Wurz-Wazinski, Kurtz Wazinski, to share some of the information about Whittier's PTA and their mission and all the activities that they participate in.
Thank you so much. I have a couple last names. First off, thank you to the board and to Dr. Russell for allowing us this opportunity to present our goals. We'll start with our mission. The mission of the PTA, we weren't too creative with this. It mirrors or is exactly the same as the National PTA's mission, which is to make every child's potential reality by empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Our mission requires that diversity, equity, and inclusion be central to our work and used in our day-to-day actions. The Whittier PTA strives to create a kind, responsive culture where all feel welcome. And in order to do so, we needed to get feedback from families in order to develop our goals. So I wanted to just give a little bit of information about the feedback that we received last year at the end of the school year. We had asked families to give us a little bit of feedback on the PTA. So our survey said that email communication was preferred. Virtual meetings were preferred with flexibility for in-person, so if it was going to be in-person, to have childcare available, as well as to have advanced notice so that individuals knew that that was happening. The next one was a desire for a more dynamic newsletter, and I'm excited to say that we actually do have one that we use through the Member Hub system that the state PTA uses. We've got really good feedback on that. And then the next is a desire for more dynamic and interactive meetings. I'm sure you all know parliamentary procedures is wonderful for keeping business moving, but not necessarily the most upbeat sometimes. So are there ways that we can infuse some fun into our meetings but still maintain that procedure? And then we scored a 3.95 for being welcoming. We asked, you know, point blank, is the PTA, is the Whittier PTA welcoming? I will preface this by saying we had a lot of positive feedback, but if we want to increase our membership, if we want to make sure that we're engaging new volunteers, we want to be welcoming to all. And so with that, our PTA was not a place where all felt welcome and heard yet, using that growth mindset. And then we're going to utilize National PTA guidance to ensure a welcoming environment for all families and children. I just wanted to highlight some of that guidance from the National PTA that helps us, enables, or enables us to reflect on how we operate. There are some questions that the National PTA presents to leadership, and one is, is membership representative of your whole community? So what is the makeup of your community? What is the backgrounds? What is the ethnic backgrounds? What is religions that are represented, socioeconomic? Illinois State Board of Education is a good place to find some of that information, as well as, of course, the principal as the leader of the school can give us more information. The second question was this awareness that there are dominant groups that may have created traditions and historical information, or have been basically created programs and things from the past. And so from the National PTA, really, it's looking at historically the individuals that have developed those, and are they as inclusive as they could be? And then are we expecting those families, especially those who have been historically marginalized, to adhere to those dominant organizational norms? Again, a question that is asked by national. And then are we unintentionally excluding others in those efforts? So with that, I wanted to go through some of our goals for the year. I did want to thank those who came before us as a board. Basically, we've had many different versions of our board who've gone through ups and downs of COVID, who have set this, basically set the path for us to be successful in our goals, and we wanted to thank them. Number one is re-engagement, so increasing awareness, knowledge, and our membership. And I will say, since we have been very direct about our goals and our efforts for inclusion, our membership is looking really good. We need 25 more families in order to have 80% of Whittier families represented in the PTA, which is, I think, really great. And then also embodying that you belong in PTA National Campaign, and that really is making sure that we are being inclusive to all individuals, no matter what their family structure, no matter what their background, making sure that we are being inclusive as possible. The second is social fun, encouraging a sense of community gathering. I'm sure you all are very aware, the past couple of years have been a little weird. Just getting together in person can be a really good goal now, and that is one that we're trying to do, is getting all our programs back up and running, and including new programs as well. And then communications. We're utilizing Member Hub, which again is the state, Illinois State PTA uses. Right now, our newsletter is through Member Hub, and we do some of our e-commerce, as well as some of our fundraising, really streamlining that process so everything is in the same place. And then another thing I'm very proud of is our website revamp. We were able to get that going before school started, which was a Herculean effort, but we have a new website. We're tweaking it a little bit, but it looks pretty good. And then documentation. I'm sure you all are aware of the binder that always gets lost, and like, where's the binder that has all the information that we need? Let's get rid of that binder. Let's digitize things, have a Google Workspace, so that all of our committees and our volunteers can be able to access that information, better document roles and responsibilities and events. And then all is in the effort to make sure that our future volunteers are set up for success, which then increases membership and increases engagement. So thank you so much for your time, and with that, I think I'll get back to Mr. Kurgman.
So I have the pleasure of sharing some of our things that we're doing at Whittier with you all, and I'd like to just start with our theme this year, which is Be the Dream. We all have dreams. We all have that ideal, that pie in the sky. Where are we headed? How can we be that dream? And that's the challenge that I've put forth to our students and our staff this year. That first picture, we all had our Be the Dream shirts on. We have our Be the Dream banner in our gym. Students are able to get their Be the Dream grade level shirts. Each grade level is a different color, so that we're, throughout the school year, revisiting that theme of, you know, not only having that dream, but being the dream. How can we make that effort to do the best that we can each and every day? With that, we look at our academic achievement, and we do that every year. You know, we look at, you know, where are we at and where can we go in that growth? You know, when we started our whole school improvement cycles of inquiry process a couple of years ago, it's definitely data-driven, and we're looking at that data throughout the school year. We have NWEA MAP. We've got IAR, the test, the state assessment, EAMS Web, Fontis and Pennel, classroom assessments. We look at all of that together in order to drive what our goals and our school improvement plan is going to be. You know, we looked at, part of that whole cycles of inquiry is that, you know, defining that root cause, getting down to really what are we looking at and where do we want to go with that? And, you know, because it's such a monumental kind of a task, you know, trying to figure out what the root cause is, and then how are we going to work on improving that root cause, we knew that it wasn't going to be a one-and-done. We weren't going to accomplish everything we wanted to in one year. Our school focus is for improvement, and the school improvement process is exactly that, a process. So the instructional leadership team, the ILT team, you know, determined that we're going to look at things and we're going to continue to work and improve. We're not going to get where we want to be in one year. Although when we look at our data and our overall growth summary at Whittier, we're doing a pretty good job, you know, in the area of mathematics. We're above what was expected. In the area of reading, we're a little below where we were expected, so we're right at that expected growth overall. So we thought about, okay, then we need to look at that reading in ELA. We really concentrated on math these last few years with our new math series, and the teachers are doing a great job teaching that math curriculum with fidelity, and we're seeing that. We're seeing that progress, and we're seeing that achievement throughout our students in each of the grade levels. And when we look at our math, you know, overall, with the, our NWA MAP scoring, we're up there. We've got a higher-than-expected growth in that area of math. So that's not to say we're going to put math on the back burner and just, you know, coast along, but teachers are continuing to add more into their classes with bridges. It takes a while to get comfortable and confident when you've rolled out a new curriculum, and there's a lot of activities, a lot of resources in bridges, and our teachers are really doing a great job as we can see through the achievement of our students. So we're very proud of our teachers, but I'm still going in and I'm, you know, checking for that fidelity of instruction, making sure we've got math corners going on, making sure we've got that small group math instruction going on, as well as that overall whole group instruction to get the kids moving throughout their lessons. But then when we looked at reading in ELA, you know, we determined that we weren't exactly where we wanted to be, and why? Why was that? On the left-hand side, you'll see the IAR data from 2021, 2022, and we're doing pretty good. We had a little bit of a hiccup there in fifth grade. And when looking at our NWA MAP assessments and data as well, again, we saw that there was, you know, something in that fifth grade, you know, in scoring. So we wanted to take a closer look at that. Not that we're not looking at all of our grade levels, because with ELA, with reading, that's definitely developmental, and we're building upon that, just like we are in math year after year after year. We want to continue that reading improvement. We want to continue that growth in reading. So when we looked a little closer at our MAP data, you know, we looked at, all of our data is good. We're very proud and we're very happy with how our kids are progressing, but when we need to look at an area or areas that, you know, that we need to really focus on, you know, we saw in that informational text, in that literary text, a little more of a need to focus there. And that's where we then, you know, determined that we're going to start on our journey of this cycles of inquiry and really looking at a root cause, and we looked at that whole idea of identifying main idea and supporting details, because that is going to carry students all the way through. When they can read, when they can comprehend, when they can determine that main idea, those supporting details, we're going to have a better achievement throughout, not just in reading, but in social studies and in science, so really pinpointing those areas. As we developed to improve, we then added text evidence this year. So as I said, it wasn't a one-and-done. Our first year, we looked at that specific main ideas and supporting details, and now this year, we're adding in that text evidence. In order to get there, the ILT, the instructional leadership team, you know, looked at what is our goal going to be now in that area of ELA? And we really wanted to continue to focus on that main idea, supporting details, and text evidence in all instructional environments throughout the building, while our instructional leadership team then provided, or provides, training, implementation support, and reflection opportunities to the staff. We're not just giving the staff, this is what you need to do, now go do it, but throughout the year and at each trimester, we've got checkpoints to making sure that we're training the staff on those activities that we want them to be able to implement within the ELA block, within our reading curriculum, and then support them throughout that implementation and then reflect on it. What's working? What's not working? What do you feel we need to change up on, you know, this whole program? So that's our overall goal of what we're working on this year to continue our school improvement in ELA. Our rationale is that, you know, the ILT team continues to meet throughout the year. We met last year on a regular basis, and when we looked at the data from the end of last year, we collected, we reviewed, we analyzed it, and the team found that, you know what? While we have shown a slight improvement in that whole area of identifying those main ideas, those supporting details, and that text evidence, we need to continue to support our students in identifying those areas. They're only going to get to be better readers, better comprehenders, and be able to understand and progress when they can understand what they're reading. Our implementation, then, as I had mentioned, we're going to support the staff throughout the school year. We want the staff to know that the ILT team is here to give them suggestions. We're working together, you know, as that whole school team. And so our ILT will provide staff with in-service training on developing these ELA practice activities that we want our staff to continue to incorporate into their classrooms for supporting the main idea, supporting details, and identifying text evidence. And what, sort of like a light bulb that went off at the end of last year as we were pulling this all together, we're like, we don't want to create something new, something additional for our staff to just have another add-on. But we looked at our benchmark reading assessments, and then we looked at the IAR, and we've got all kinds of practice items from previous IARS that fall right into this goal and this idea of, you know, identifying the main idea, identifying those supporting details, identifying that text evidence. So wouldn't it be a great idea, a great plan, to take what we're already using with benchmark and with IAR and just continue to further develop that? So now kids are getting exposed to IAR type of questioning and concepts earlier in the school year, not just when it's time, you know, that we're taking that IAR. So we're not teaching IAR, but we're teaching those skills, and we're teaching those strategies so that when IAR comes around, our students will be more confident in taking that assessment. So our ILT implementation plan, again, we're really big on pushing and supporting that training, that implementing, and that reflecting. We want this to be a continual cycle, a continual process. Our plans and timelines to measure that effectiveness, you know, we're looking at these ELA practice activities, and those ELA practice activities are actually going to be those IAR sample questions that each of our grade level, first, the ILT team pulled together to get our grade levels started. And they're going to then discuss those questions and discuss those responses so that the students realize, okay, this is how I found it, and this is why it is that main idea that's supporting detail. So we'll collect data on those practice activities. We're going to collect data on targeted benchmark assessments each trimester to see that process and that growth throughout the year. So not just looking at one type of data point, whether it's NWEA or IAR, but we're going to look at a variety to see how we're progressing. We'll be collecting and analyzing throughout the school year to determine our growth in those identifying of the supporting detail for the main idea, along with identifying that text evidence to determine our next steps. We're hoping by the end of this school year, we've made even more progress than we made last school year. But again, knowing that this is going to be an area that we're going to continually improve, and once we get to a point where we're happy with it, we still have to continue to keep working on that, because reading comprehension is so important across the board. So as I mentioned, we have trimester checkpoints. The ELA practice is what has been developed grade level-specific. We're asking that each teacher do at least one of those per week to get organized and get into that routine of practicing main idea, supporting details, text evidence. They'll begin with that guided practice where the teacher is doing it and showing the teacher of the students, and they're doing it together, and then they get to, you know, move to that "we do," where we're doing it together, to eventually, by the second trimester, third trimester, the students are doing it independently. We look at the weekly benchmark assessments in review. Every week, there's a benchmark assessment throughout the units that the teachers are doing. And what we found when we, again, analyzed the data was, there's two-part questions that ask about the main idea and the supporting details, and students can get one of those pieces right, but not the other. So after students take those two-part question assessments, to go back then in small group or, you know, in whole group first, and then breaking it into even, you know, smaller groups when they have their small group instruction, guided reading instruction, analyze those responses. What did they think the main idea was? Why did they think that was the main idea? And then how did those supporting details support that main idea? To, again, make the assessment a learning experience, not just, okay, here's your assessment, here's your grade, we're moving on, but actually reflecting on that and learning from that. And then each trimester, we're taking one specific benchmark assessment to really analyze and look at, to make sure that we've hit it on the mark. And that's what's happening at Whittier and how we're continuing to work in our school improvement area, in the area of ELA. So again, thank you very much for giving us that opportunity. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Kurgman. Thank you to the PTA. Thank you to the student council. We have a small gift for you, and thanks for the student council sponsors. We really appreciate your time and you guys being here tonight. All right. Listed on tonight's communication are three communications received by the board. Are there any additional communications board members would like to share at this time? All right, and that brings us to the spotlight on our schools today, which is the Fall Data Snapshot. Mr. Cecil.
Thanks very much. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we really have just an opportunity to provide a district-level overview of our Fall 2022 Benchmarking data, and this is our second go-around at utilizing the format that was agreed upon last spring and used for the June data as well. And then at the end, I want to provide a preview. This is the season where there's a lot of data at the local level, at the state level to talk about, and so I'll kind of give a preview of the next four, next three board meetings and what we'll be discussing and looking at at each of those. So just some overall impressions on Fall Data in general before we dive in. First, we always remember that Fall Data is gathered with the furthest distance from in-school instruction. So, you know, these assessments are taken in the first, second, and third weeks of the school year, so we just have to remember what the impacts could have been. You know, the nice thing about what we're going to look at tonight through the Ekra platform is that previously, we had talked about Fall Data as sort of our beginning-of-the-year benchmark, and then we would see how far we grew from that point in time. And while we can still look at that, the advantage of using Ekra's platform and methodology is we can already say, based on this initial benchmark, how are our students performing compared to where they ought to be even at this moment, based on their propensity and the scores that Ekra develops? So we'll be able to look at that a little bit differently than we've looked at Fall Data in the past. Generally speaking, before we get into the specific numbers, we are within expected growth in both reading and math. Reading is actually showing slightly higher. It's interesting, we've seen two months of principals going over spring data that showed math data meant much higher. Our Fall reading growth data is a little bit higher, and one of the things that's been suggested actually by Ekra at some seminars we went to previously is that, over the summer, students tend to read more than they tend to do math, and that may be sad to some, but that just tends to be a statistical reality, and so that could have some impact on why we're seeing that difference right now. We continue to see very high achievement in both math and reading based on our NWA MAP scores. Our EAMS Web Early Literacy has been a point of great discussion over the past couple of years with those foundational skills through the pandemic, and we're back to pre-pandemic numbers. So we're right in line with where we were prior to the pandemic, and I've kind of just put the numbers up there so we can see where we're at. Again, this is information that we'll look at and talk about how we're ready to digest it. We'll see that middle school math growth is showing up as lower than expected in this dataset. It's really one of the only areas that shows up lower than expected right now, and so that's something we've already begun to address. And then also, all of our subgroups are within expected growth in reading as we start the school year, which is a really exciting thing to see, and to see kind of what that chart looks like. These first slides are a continued demonstration of how we presented data historically that we agreed to keep in the presentations for at least the next couple. So this just demonstrates exactly where we are achievement-wise by grade level for both reading on the left and math on the right, based on our Fall MAP scores. Again, Again, you know, we can talk about how their the percentiles are really very high across the board, but that third column in where it talks about the achievement percentile, remember, that's the the data that says that compared to all of the other students in N W A's norm samples and what that looks like, our median percentile puts us at that achievement percentile nationally. So for example, our first grade median percentile of eighty-one in reading puts us at the ninety-eighth percentile within the map sample set of first grade throughout their national study. And so when we look at that achievement percentile column, it again points to really very strong achievement based on the map system. We also show the early literacy and numeracy charts. Again, these, we tend to point to that far-right green, yellow, red bar chart there where we can see kind of where we're at at the start of the year. Again, these are students entering our system for the first time, and we look at kindergarten. So this is typical to to see that, yes, we have a majority of our students in that green area, but some other students who, at this first assessment, show that they'll need some additional work and support, much of which is built into our system and isn't necessarily individualized intervention at the kindergarten level, but really is just exposing students to those foundational skills as we go through. Early numeracy, our students are coming in, again, with a stronger percentage in the green at this point. And again, this will just continue to develop with exposure to some of those those mathematical skills and concepts. I mentioned first grade early literacy, and again, we still see that, yes, even, you know, coming, most of these students coming through kindergarten, we're still recognizing that those foundational skills are important. But again, our structures are built to attend to that both through whole group and small group, and sometimes individualized intervention in first grade. But again, those numbers are consistent with what we would have seen in Fall of eighteen, Fall of nineteen. And so our system is prepared to see that shift far more to the green. And we look forward to the Fall-Spring comparison with this one where we can see the fruits of the labors of all of our teachers and interventionists. And similarly, this is first grade early numeracy, very comparable to those kindergarten beginning numbers in terms of where we fall across the spectrum. Just a reminder, as we go into the Ekra platform, and I think this may be the last time we do these reminder slides, because I think we're getting more comfortable with that platform and seeing it through our building presentations and our district presentations. But what Ekra does to to monitor or measure growth is they first look at everything we know about a student from their prior year performance, and then they take that and also look at our local norms, what would a typical student, what would a student achieve in Downers Grove based on our local norm data? And from that, they develop what's called a propensity score, which is the second dot on that arrow graphic. That propensity score for each individual student yields a projection for where they should perform if all things were equal, no improvement efforts were made, if nothing, you know, if everything else stayed static, this is where we would expect that student to perform on Fall, Winter, Spring, and then part assessments. So then what they do is they take a look at the actual score. So in this case, they're looking, we're looking at our students' Fall actual map scores and comparing the distance between that score and what that projection would have been. And that's what demonstrates the amount of growth that each individual student has made and that extension any group of students when combined together. This is just the reminder that they measure growth in terms of, you know, that that effect size. So zero point zero zero is exactly expected growth, where a student would have been predicted to land. You may see numbers positive on the positive side of zero, which indicates positive growth, but negative doesn't indicate negative growth. It doesn't mean that they've lost knowledge. It just means that they didn't quite reach those projections. And so we really look at the distance between those things. And then, as we saw in in the slides from Whittier, the the color coding is really the sort of the quickest way to visualize where we're at. So anything with a green dotted within the expected range of growth, blue dots are higher than expected, yellow is lower, and then if we start to see red, that really is what Ekra terms sort of unsatisfactory. That's two standard deviations away from expected growth for a student or group of students. So then we always, so what we're looking at now is our Fall Growth Summary Report, and this is exclusively looking at map data. At the time of this report, Ekra has not yet built projections for kindergarten and first grade because those are built using some of the Fall data going forward. So we'll see some of that later in the year for those grades, but we start out looking at grades three, excuse me, grade, the second grade as well. So we start out looking at grades three through eight with this report. And so we see overall, when we take math and reading combined, all subjects, we are within and just about right on the expected growth with with really every school falling within that green range at the Fall. So that that's a good starting point. That tells us that we're right about where we should be at this time during the year. We break it out further, as we said, mathematics, we're still seeing overall well within the expected range. As I mentioned, Herrick and O'Neill are showing up as lower than expected growth this Fall, and so that's just something that we will keep in mind as we go forward. Reading, then, we're seeing higher-than-expected growth across the board with a couple of blue dots popping up in there. But again, all of our schools starting off at or or a little bit ahead of where we are expected to be when taken in aggregate. So that's good news for us. Again, this breaks it down by grade level, and we can see sort of, you know, again, with math, we're seeing some of the same areas of strength we're starting to see consistently. And then, you know, as I mentioned, a little bit lower than expected at the middle school level. We already, at the end of last year, initiated contact with a consultant from the Metro Chicago Mathematics Institute, who's been working with our middle school teachers on institute days and professional learning Mondays, and will be with us throughout the year. Her focus really is on, you know, we're the third year into a curricular adoption, so the focus is on pedagogy, it's on differentiation, it's on really just maximizing the time and and bringing out the things that our teachers already do well and and bringing them to the forefront and making sure that that continues to grow as we look now, again, not just at what we're teaching, but at how we're teaching it. So that partnership is already providing some reflection space and some professional learning for our middle school math teachers on some of those instructional strategies in general. And again, when we look at reading, we're still, we're seeing by grade level above or expected growth across the board. As I mentioned, our subgroup scores, again, we are seeing a couple lower than expected for math, but again, generally speaking, starting the year within that expected range or right around it. And then for reading, we begin at the expected range, and even noticing our E L population is already showing slightly higher than expected growth as we look through. So again, this is a really good starting point for us. It tells us that, you know, it it kind of confirms that if we're looking at the Ekra model and we're thinking about things being where we left them off, it says, yes, we're starting in a really good place for our our Fall data. So what we did with this, then, each building has had Fall data meetings to look at student data across the board. Some of that is individual data when we look at small groups and interventions, but also looking at the tier one all-student data to see kind of where we're at and if there are areas of focus for this year. That doesn't all make it into the school improvement planning process exactly, but the SIP process does use the Ekra data that we've had in June and that what we had in August. So this this format has been familiar. In terms of using this format to lead our building-level meetings, we've begun that this Fall. This winter, after benchmarking, it will be consistent by our administrators and some of our specialists and interventionists. And then by the May benchmarking period, all of our teachers will have Ekra logins and will be able to individually access and have been trained on how to look at the data through that platform. So by the end of this school year, we will be one hundred percent, we'll be at one hundred percent users on that actual platform and accessing it. And again, just continuing, you know, we begin the year using both spring and Fall data to kind of inform our instructional decision-making and and what that will look like. As I mentioned, this is the season of much data at the state level and across the board. So tonight is the brief overview of where we're at with our Fall data. October twenty-first, we'll be sharing each building's SIP plans. You've got a little sample of Whittier's and some of the goals and language that's in there, so you'll receive those as a board. We won't discuss each one publicly at a meeting like this because over the course of the year, you'll hear about those plans from each of our building principals, just as we have from Hillcrest and Whittier the past two meetings, but they will be posted on websites. October twenty-fourth is our curriculum workshop. We have some additional data from Ekra that ties to year-end last year and includes some I A R summaries, some I A R projections for this year, so we'll be diving into that a little bit. We'll have updates from all of our committees, brief updates, just to give the board an idea of where all of that committee work is at and what goals have been identified for this year. Again, I mentioned, we'll talk a little bit about the SIP plans and what that looks like. And then we also have the release of the School Report Card, which will be on Friday, October twenty-eighth this year. And so again, that's the state document. It's looked a little different over the past couple of years, but we're back to now what it would have looked like in the Fall of twenty nineteen, which includes all of the measurements and includes a summative designation for each of our thirteen schools. This is something the state started in the Fall of eighteen. They were released again in the Fall of nineteen and then suspended or kind of carried over through the past two years because of the inconsistency of data statewide. Now that there had, now that the I A R and the state assessments were completed by all districts in the state last spring, they are back to summative designation. So we'll talk more about that at the Curriculum Workshop. In November, then, as we did in both the Fall of twenty eighteen and the Fall of twenty nineteen, I am going to host, along with the building principals, a parent forum at each of the buildings throughout November, so that anyone who's interested in learning more about the state report card, the designations, the data behind it, and then really the specifics of what that school's data is and what led to the designation and what steps schools are taking in terms of school improvement and general programming, we'll have those happen as well. On the fourteenth, then, the spotlight will be on the District Report Card, just highlighting some of the things that are on that state measurement. It will have been public for a couple of weeks, so if any questions come in, we can incorporate those and just a brief overview there. And then, as the board is aware, we have been working and reflecting on our equity journey as a district in two ways. Last year, we commissioned the Equity Audit, and we also, this year for the first time, and we'll talk about this a little bit more with the Report Card preview, ISB has included a placement on what they're referring to as the Equity Journey Continuum for each school district. So we have data from the state to review in terms of what their their lens is for our district's place on that Equity Continuum, and then we have data that we've commissioned for our, in terms of our district and where we are at in terms of equity. And so we wanted to dedicate an evening to really looking at both of those pieces side by side. In advance of that, and we'll talk a little bit more about this on the twenty-fourth, our district equity leadership team will meet and has already met to sort of go through some of the findings and start to propose some potential next steps for District Fifty-Eight as a result of putting those two pieces side by side. So that'll be the focus of the November twenty-first Curriculum Workshop. So you'll be hearing quite a bit from me in the next two months, but hopefully this will keep it in reasonable-sized chunks so that it can be a meaningful conversation and presentation.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Love the format. I know it took us a while to get here, and there was a lot of discussion around it, but now, having seen this for a second time in this full presentation and seen it now twice with the the schools, I think we're off to a great start in that. So I'll open the floor from the board if there's any questions or comments on this first round of of school performance data, district performance.
I have a couple of questions. Jess, would you mind going to slide nineteen for a second?
If you tell me which one is nineteen, I get that.
It's it's, we're looking at the subgroups, subgroups for reading. Okay, so I like this slide. It it looks really great because we're looking at subgroup subgroup growth, and the I is drawn to the last column, which has all the green dots and one one blue dot. I guess I just, I feel obligated to ask a question about some of our ethnic subgroups because if you just look at growth, everything looks fine, but if you dig any kind of look at achievement, we're going to see that there there is definitely an achievement gap there between our white and Asian subgroups and our our black and Hispanic subgroups. So I guess my question would be, at your level, district-wide, how, what are we using that that data, the achievement data, and how are we using that to address those gaps currently?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So what we're, you know, you can see here on these charts in terms of achievement, remember, is that column that says percent met benchmark, and that's the column that correlates to, based on this dataset, are you expected to earn a four or five on the I A R in E L A? That's that, that's the correlation there. And so that's actually one of the conversations that has begun at the District Equity Leadership Team, which is sort of at the high level of just looking across the district. It's one of the primary measurements the state uses for an entire category of the Equity Journey Continuum. So now you're giving a little, getting a little preview of what's going to come in November, but we do, we do take a look at that. Again, you know, one of the things we always have to look at is sample size and making sure that we're making meaningful comparisons with groups of students. You know, the other, we tend to focus on growth, you're right, in these categories because we, that is the thing that we, if we can see more growth year over year, that is what will close the achievement gap. So I think the emphasis on growth is important, but I, but I agree, I think we are also acknowledging that, yes, there are, you know, there are some things here that show some gaps in achievement, particularly when you look at this metric in terms of meeting that benchmark. I think that's where, you know, we look at, again, some of the same things that are important for, in our school improvement planning processes, making sure that they're applied universally, making sure that there are things that can be applied universally, and then really getting down to the individual student level at the building level. So for, you know, for me to say there is a gap here is is one level. What I want to make sure of is that any of the students who are either showing lower growth or who really are in that achievement gap level when we look at map data, who are scoring in the, you know, twenty and thirtieth percentile, what plans do we have in place for those students as individuals to make sure we're meeting their needs? And so that that really is kind of the, at one level, yes, we're looking to see where are the gaps and what do they look like over time? And then at the individual student level, then, is kind of, it almost jumps all the way to there to say, now, I want to see who are, what are the names of the students that make up these categories, where those gaps are, and let's make sure that we have plans in place for them that reflect their own individual achievement and and the gaps we're trying to close.
So I guess what you're saying in a way is like, the, the rubber's going to hit the road at the building level, at the classroom level, and and I guess the buildings, we can assume as a board, the buildings that have more heterogeneity are going to, are going to be more aware of this data and are going to be addressing those issues on a on a classroom student level?
Yeah, I mean, I can, you know, having sat with a few school improvement or instructional leadership teams, excuse me, as they're working on the SIP plan, I can say firsthand, when we start breaking those down, you know, at the building level, some of those subgroups are are in the ten, fifteen, or even single digits sometimes, and the teachers in the room and the administrators can can actually just name, you know, they can name the students without, you know, in part because of their placement in that subgroup, but they can also talk about the plans that are in place or some of the challenges they've they've encountered, or whether that student moved in mid-year last year or what that looks like. So I really do think it's it's one of those things where it's a, it's a combination of seeing the bigger picture and looking at it through an equity lens and making sure there's nothing in our system that is causing those gaps, but then the the true impact is at the individual level.
Thank you.
Remember, Doshi?
Yeah, I had a, I had a couple of questions. If we, if we, a trend that I'm noticing across across the data sets is particularly in math, when we get to middle school, we start to see numbers start to drop. Still a strong growth relative to the nation, but less growth than what we were, what we see in our early elementary and upper elementary grades. Particularly in math, I'm seeing that. I'm wondering if you're noticing that trend and if that's a trend that we're, I can't remember to pass presentations, but if that's a trend that we've seen over time, what is it about our middle school relative to our elementary schools that we're seeing differences? And what are we seeing in other middle schools across across the area that might be able to help us understand what's happening in our middle schools that's leading to a potentially declining trend in achievement?
So your second question is one I don't have an answer to yet, but as the Report Card data comes out for neighboring districts, one of the comparisons we always try to make is at least the District Ninety-Nine sending schools and things like that. So we can certainly start to look and see, at least from an I A R perspective, what we're seeing. Again, it's always difficult to get apples to apples on some of the other data. You know, I I hesitate to use the word trend always because we're, we're still relatively new in looking through the Ekra lens, but but yes, I think we we have seen a little bit of a valley in our seventh and eighth grade math growth numbers in particular. So part of that is, you know, we we took a step back and said, okay, we're, like I said, we're three years into a new curricular adoption. We need to make sure that that is happening with fidelity, but then we also want to take a step back and look at pedagogically, you know, are there teaching shifts we need to make? One of the things that we knew about our K-five program was that the requirement was that teachers really approached math instruction in a, in a pretty significantly different way than we than we had been for the past ten, and then different still from what we had done from the previous ten. And so there was a lot of professional learning on the how of teaching. With the big ideas adoption, those shifts weren't necessarily as mandated by the, by the resource, and so we worked to to get our scope and sequence aligned to get into that. But now, you know, kind of looking at if this, what we saw happen well with our our younger numbers is that those shifts, you know, you could start to say now, as the data continues, have had an impact on our growth. And so we're, we're trying to replicate that impact right now at the middle school level so that we're providing the same kind of professional learning for our teachers that we did for K-five with that adoption. And again, I think the other piece is just continuing to look at what intervention supports are we providing? One of the things we haven't had previously in our middle school schedule is the ability to provide additional math support without taking away an entire class. to provide additional math support without taking away an entire class. And often, when students need support in both reading and math, reading is going to get addressed first, and then there's good reason for that. But with the addition of the student support period and the way we shift the schedule, we have 100-plus students who are receiving additional math intervention that wasn't available to them prior to this year. So I think those are two gaps that we had identified already that we're working to fill. So that my hope is that we won't be using the word trend in May as a result of some of that work.
Thanks for that. And I should have gone in the opposite order. Going back to the slide that member Harris was highlighting, just to make sure I'm reading the data correctly. In order for us to see the percent met benchmark numbers go up, we need to see multiple testing cycles or reporting cycles of the color coding in the blue. Is that right? Like, if you see higher-than-expected growth, that's when you start to close the met benchmark gap? Or am I interpreting that incorrectly?
I think that might be true, but I don't know that I want to, I don't know that I want to say that is exactly the way to look at it. I think that we want to see, you know, if we're trying to close an achievement gap, which is kind of what member Harris was referring to, then the way to close that is by having the group that is the lower end of the gap grow more than everybody else. That, you know, we want to see more growth in those subgroups. The percent.
No, grow more than, grow more than they were expected to grow.
Correct.
Not relative to everybody else, just how much they were expected to grow.
Correct. And that should continue to bring achievement up. Now, you know, three cycles of blue dots doesn't necessarily mean that that met benchmark number is going to go up in a correlative fashion because the percent met benchmark just has to do with that achievement on that day for that group. It should go up, but it's not, I don't want to, I don't want to speak to that being an exact correlation, but generally speaking, I agree with the way you're looking at it. If we continue to see higher-than-expected growth, the numbers that yield that higher-than-expected growth ought to be higher, which ought to raise the percent who are projected to meet the benchmark.
I think directionally, that generally makes sense. And what I'm wondering is with our partnership with ECRAS, one of the things that I had the luxury of in my day job is we work on closing the degree divide for students that are in post-secondary. And in that work, we have thousands of universities across the country with a ton of data, and we know Georgia State University, you know, highlighting their work, they've closed a degree divide between races and economic groups. And they're, you know, they're the stars of the post-secondary space, and they open up doors and like explain to people what they're doing, what their programming looks like. I'm wondering if ECRAS is allowed or able to help us understand who are the stars that are seeing higher-than-expected growth in particular subgroups? Who are the stars that are regularly able to show demographic shifts or achievement gap shifts in their district? And can we like cherry pick those districts and help us understand what are the practices and procedures that are happening there that we might be able to replicate? Again, it might be a pipe dream, but I'm wondering if that's a path that is worth exploring, at least with ECRAS or other partners that we might have?
Yeah, it is certainly an inquiry we can make. Inquiries are free of charge to us. And then further projects with ECRAS sometimes are and sometimes aren't, but we can certainly see what is available and what they might be able to share just preliminarily and then look forward through. They offer a number of in-person seminars where we do get a chance to network with other districts who are there. I don't know that that is a question we have specifically asked of other ECRAS member districts who are around, but certainly as we continue to attend those over the years, even if ECRAS doesn't have a specific path for us, that can be something that we target in our networking just to see what else is out there when we're in those rooms.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I just had one follow-up based on Vice President Harris, and that is, you talked about professional development time in math at the middle school. Have you guys already been putting some additional stuff in planning for that, for this school year? Is that something that you're already in the process of doing?
Yeah, so the consultant I mentioned from the Metro Chicago Math Institute, which is through UIC, they, she has been with us since the beginning of this school year. She actually came and met teachers last May, and we had some preliminary discussions. And she was with us, they were together for half of the opening institute day, and she's already been back for one Monday. I have to stop and think because we have a few of these are all different. And she's actually coming, she'll be here tomorrow, actually working in classrooms with some of our middle school math teachers and doing some co-teaching, just modeling strategies and things like that. So that was something, again, that and the intervention were things that we identified last spring and have really put into place beginning at the start of this year.
And just to piggyback, you know, Karate just asked learning about best practices. We're really excited about our partnership with MCMI. That's the Metro Chicago Math Initiative out of UIC, and they partner with so many districts around the Chicagoland area where you can really start to get a sense of what are those best practices? Are we the best-practice district? Are there others? Can we learn from them? And there's just a wealth of information, and it's all based off of the NCTM standards, and it's just a really good partnership, so we're excited about that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to reports to the board. First up is the superintendent report. Dr. Russell?
Well, first off, I want to start off by thanking the Whittier students, staff, principal, PTA, and families for coming to the board meeting, especially after a three-day weekend. So Michael, I thought you and your team did a great job, and thank you very much to the PTA as well. Very well done. I'd also like to thank Mr. Sissel for his work in putting together a very detailed fall data snapshot. Those things do not come together easily, and, you know, we spent a lot of time the last year working on that. And Justin, I just want to thank you for all of your hard work, and you do a really nice job presenting that. So with that, I think we'll skip curriculum and instruction for the superintendent's report. Real quick with finance, the auditors have been working in the district, and their work is almost done. They were in the office all last week. When they are done, of course, the report will be issued. We intend to present the audit at either the November or the December board meeting, obviously depending on when we receive that report. But the board will get that, and so just a heads up to the board president that you will likely be contacted, as is standard protocol. And Steve, member also, you also may be contacted as a member of the FAC. Sometimes they do that, sometimes they don't. In terms of personnel, I shared this with the board, but I'd also like to share this with the public, especially some of our parents out there that are listening. The building principals are working with their staff to plan a variety of extracurricular opportunities for students. This was very important during COVID, but I think it's even more important post-COVID. They're developing clubs, intermurals, and other activities for students to participate in throughout the year. We know that the more students are involved in extracurricular activities, the better they do in school. While the clubs and activities will not be the same at each school, we do expect each school to develop a comparable number of opportunities, and we do pay a stipend per the teacher's contract for that. The middle schools will offer six clubs in addition to other activities such as sports and Student Council, intermurals, drama club, and interscholastic sports. The elementary schools will offer four clubs in addition to the Student Council, Safety Patrol, and intermurals. The clubs and activities that have been confirmed thus far will be included in this personnel agenda, and then, of course, we expect to have more next month and then perhaps even in December as we continue to make sure that all the schools arrange their clubs for the year. So we want to thank our sponsors and our students and families for signing up. Terms of technology, the parent-teacher conference scheduling window opened up last week, and families have been actively using the software to schedule conferences. As of this afternoon, almost 4,900 conferences have been scheduled using the system. As a reminder, middle school students' families can schedule multiple conferences. Families have through next Monday morning to schedule a conference. If anyone needs assistance getting a conference scheduled, they are encouraged to contact their school or the technology department. And if for some reason you ever get a, this teacher is filled message, we also accommodate families, and we will make sure that every family who wants a conference will get a parent-teacher conference. So I want to thank James. Conference software is not always the easiest to navigate, but I think you're doing a really good job with this, and I haven't gotten an email about it yet, so I'm assuming everything is going well, so thank you so much. In terms of student services, we want to remind our community that the annual State Board of Education deadline for completing mandated childhood immunizations and physicals is October 15th. That is this week. Districts are required to exclude students from school who have not completed this process by that date. I do want to clear up any confusion in the community. The COVID-19 vaccine is not one of the required immunizations. However, there are several that are required, and you can see that on the form. Because of this, our health offices and school administrators are very diligent about notifying, explaining, and supporting families to meet these mandates with informational reminding messages starting at the end of the school year prior. Students who are deemed homeless to McKinley Vento eligible are excluded from this deadline by law. However, we remain committed to helping all families to remove any barriers associated with this health access. If you have any questions at all regarding this process, please contact the nurse and the health office at your child's school. A special thank you to our nurses who have put in countless hours helping to ensure that school, that students can remain in school. I can tell you, that is one of the biggest things they do this time of year, and we're very, very grateful. In terms of public relations, we are now just wrapping up our committee recruitment at both the board level and the district level. District 58 received 53 applications from parents, guardians, staff, and community members to join our District 58 Strategic Plan Councils and Board of Education committees. Myself, Justin Sissel, and Megan Hewitt met this past Friday morning and placed almost all applicants on a council or committee. We really try hard, if somebody can't get their first request, to make sure that we still offer them an opportunity to participate. We think that's very important. We're very blessed to have such a great community that participates, and we want to make sure that everybody gets a chance. So if you did sign up and you didn't receive a notification, please shoot me an email or Megan Hewitt an email, or call one of us, and we'll make sure that we get you on a committee. In terms of facilities, Kevin Bardo had to step out right now. He's working with the Indian Trail PTA, and he's working with all the other schools on their playground projects. So we're very excited that with the grant that came through from the State Board of Education, lots of work going on around playgrounds. I didn't want anybody to forget that, and we're very excited. And I do want to take this opportunity to publicly thank our PTAs and/or support groups at each one of our schools. I am amazed and, you know, just quite frankly blown away at the level of support our families are putting in to make sure that all of our kids have great playground spaces, and we thank them for their individual contributions and their time. It is very appreciated, and, you know, the kids will benefit from that for many years to come. So thank you to all of our families and/or staff who are working so hard on that. With that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Wonderful. Todd is ready to go as usual. Next up is the monthly business and the treasurer's report.
It's nice that we have a quiet month and operations for you. We only have two action items up for you. First part is a year-to-date report. Things are moving along as expected. You can look at and see what the year-to-date report is at. One of the pieces you're looking at is as a percentage. On the expenditure side, it looks a bit heavier against budget than the prior year. And as, just as a reminder, what we discussed last month, a big chunk of that, or the reason for that is in the supply material budget in the Ed Fund, there was a purchase of the iPads that had federal reimbursement come in, and that bill was paid early in the year. That eats up probably 50% or 60% of our supply budget in the Ed Fund. That is as expected. And Dr. Russell noted the audit. When you get the audit, although this is on a cash basis, because we took receipt of those iPads, the revenue and expenses will be rolled back and be reported in FY '22 because the audit is on a modified accrual where this, on a month-to-month, we show on cash. So we'll go through that piece when we get the audit, but just as a heads up on that when that does come. We do have two items this evening. The maintenance grant, which is a $50,000 match from the state.
Sure.
We have, we continue to work on abatement projects with these funds. And so that is, again, our next projected piece to submit for the state for reimbursement and for approval for that grant. The other is our annual rating for the medical fund. We are a self-insured health medical fund. This year, we have some good news. We've had continual good news. Only one of the four designs, we offer four different plan designs in our, in our plan. The universal PPO plan has a 5% increase. The PPO with the, which is the high deductible with the HSA, has a 0% again this year.
Excuse me.
Perfect timing.
Just to spice it up.
And so we have, once the board approves those, we have open enrollment dates set to get out and meet with staff. We have both in-person meetings at as many buildings as possible, as well as some online Zoom formats, particularly in the evening. We've had some staff that have asked that their spouse be able to attend so they can ask questions and kind of make a decision as to which plan best fits them. So those are our two items up for board approval this evening, unless there are any questions.
Any from the board?
Wonderful.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time. All right, that brings us to the committees. No policy committee has met since the last board meeting, but the legislative committee did on September 27th. Member Russell?
Yes. Very short, brief meeting. We discussed briefly the items coming up for vote this year for the legislative council, so we'll be doing that come, I think it's end of November, Kevin? Is that it?
No, actually, the end of October, and then we'll present it in November.
Right, okay. Yeah, and so we'll have another legislative meeting in between to further discuss those items and determine what we're going to do. We'll be back to the board.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. The financial advisory committee did not meet. The district leadership did meet on September the 19th, 22.
I'll go.
Yep.
We met, and it was a relatively short meeting. We went through the October progress update, and as everyone knows, the strategic plan is nearing its expiration. So Dr. Russell talked about the work on the next steps with the strategic planning, and they'll do, they'll begin the work on that after November, after the November election. And Justin went through goal one, and a lot of that stuff, a lot of the work on curriculum is ongoing, so that was a short one. And then Megan talked about recruiting new board members for the different committees as part of the strategic plan, goal number two with connecting with community. And Todd Rayfall talked about, reported that we did approve putting the referendum on the November ballot and that the next steps in facility planning will be determined after the November election. We briefly talked about the KPI, the KPIs, and right now, the curriculum council and the district leadership team will meet again before those are presented back to the full board at a later date. Do you have any other things you want to add, Karat? It was, it was short.
It was a short one?
Yep.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Karat. All right, health and wellness, Vice President Harris. You guys met on October 3rd.
I am pleased to update the board on the rate increase that's going to go effective January 1. I think when we were having meetings in March, April, May, I was painting a pretty gloomy picture for where I thought we would be at this point in time. We had a good summer. If you recall, July of 2021, I believe, was the worst month we ever had with our plan, and July is always a bad month. That's when our stop-loss insurance restarts, it's when a lot of our teachers seek medical treatment because they're off for the summer. So it's always a very expensive month. This month in July, we were expecting the worst. We actually had a small surplus that month. So when I was maybe predicting a need to increase our premiums by eight, nine, 10%, as of January 1st of 2023, we're only increasing the one plan, the PPO plan for January 1st at 5%, and the other three plans will stay flat. And then I'd just like to acknowledge the hard work that the committee is doing to get this information into our staff's hands. I think we had a meeting once where Mike Baker was here and he was talking about how families will spend an exorbitant amount of time planning their next vacation, but they'll spend like two minutes a year planning for their insurance. So getting this information out to our staff is key, and getting our, the members of our committee involved, speaking to their own peers, will be helpful in getting information that they can use to make informed decisions. And that's it. Any questions? Any questions for anybody?
No, and again, just to highlight, member Harris, I know Todd Rayfall has an entire schedule to go out, both virtually and in person over the next month, and really just talk to our staff and answer any questions and to educate people on our plan so they can make the best decision for them, which has yielded pretty positive results over the past several years. So we appreciate Todd and all the health and wellness committee members doing that and giving up some time in their day to make that happen.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, we have no discussion items tonight, so that does bring us to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not an, is not intended for a time for members to get into, enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. The board is allotted 30 minutes tonight. We ask you to keep your comments to a three-minute limit. It'll allow everybody to have an opportunity to speak. At this time, I do have two cards. First up, we have David Rose on referendum. Is that for us to be listening to? Because I can't hear it.
We can't hear it, I'm sorry.
Is that something that you'd be able to send to us that we'd be able to have an easier time hearing it? I think we were able to catch a big gist of it, but I would like to hear that clearer. So if you could email that, that would be fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Rose. All right. We have Marshall Schmidt also on the referendum.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I had to leave the meeting. There's another important meeting going on across town regarding the development downtown, so I wanted to be there as well. I want to register my strong objection to the manner in which the district has handled the referendum. As everyone knows, the law strictly prohibits the district from spending district resources to advocate for the referendum. And I think if you look carefully at the materials that the district is bombarding the community with, you've stepped over the line. The presentation that is supposedly only informational is not only very one-sided, but it's very misleading. And if you look at several of the pieces that were distributed in an email blast this week, if you look at the bottom of them, they really actively advocate for passing the referendum, and that's strictly prohibited. And I really do resent, as much as I believe in the schools in this district, and as important as the schools are, and I was in your seat once, and as tempting as it is to advocate for the referendum because you believe so strongly that the kids deserve the money, you're prohibited from doing that. And there are several aspects of the materials you're distributing which are particularly problematic, and I want to give you some examples. One example is the statement in the materials that you've agreed with the village to pay rent over 25 years. Two meetings ago, you voted, or you were told, that the district was paying all the rent for those 25 years upfront. And as I explained at the last meeting, that results in a loss to the district of between $1.6 and $3.2 million. That's financial mismanagement. The second problem I have with this is you talk about how there's been an extensive community engagement process. The current plan, the current list of items, was developed years ago before the pandemic. It has not been reassessed. You have not, and in the materials that you distribute to the community, you do not explain that the financial prospects for the district are actually improved because of the high inflation. The tax cap is less of a problem. You will bring in more money. There's much more government money available for infrastructure improvements. None of that's been taken into account. But my time has passed, and I just want to make sure that the community understands that what the district is doing is, at a minimum, getting very close to the legal line. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krot. Is there anybody else? We have a little bit of time left, so if there's anyone else that has a public comment tonight? All right, then, at this point, we're going to take a quick recess, just two to three minutes, so if you could stay really close. All right? All right. Calling us back to order. First up is the approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? All right. If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes from September 12th, 2022, regular meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion carried to approve the minutes of the September 12th, 2022, regular meeting as presented.
I just have to abstain because I wasn't here last week.
Okay.
So I don't know how to do that in a boat like that. Abstain?
I think we can note it.
Thank you.
Yep. Perfect. All right. We have the consent agenda up. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right. If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report and financial statements, consisting of the list of bills and summary?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. Couple of recommendations for action tonight. The first one up is the appointment of an IASB delegate. Is there a motion to appoint Kirat Doshi as delegate and Emily Hannis as the alternate delegate to the 2022 Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly?
So moved.
All right. Any discussion?
Thank you both.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion carried to appoint Kirat Doshi delegate and Emily Hannis as alternate delegate to the 2022 Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. We have a recommendation to approve medical insurance rates. Is there a motion to approve the changes to the medical insurance rates as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I'm wondering if, as we do this, we do this every year, and so I'm wondering, we obviously are deferring, we take as input the recommendation from our consultants. I'm wondering if, like, we can get a lens into their, like, barometer, so it's not as much of a, like, subjective system as much as, like, I'd like to be able to, like, make it a bit more predictable on if we have this much surplus or deficit, or is that just like an unlikely target to be able to, like, get to?
It's a little bit harder than having a surplus and a deficit because they have to factor into what the market, how the market's performing. So they do, like, an analysis of how much it's going, how much they expect our costs to also go up in the next year. So that plays into it. And I think, I mean, Todd's probably going to be explaining by the night, so he's grabbing the mic, so I'm just going to turn it over to him.
There we go. When the consultant, our consultants review with the Health and Wellness Committee, it takes into account where we're at with the fund balance currently, and then looks at a couple, you know, what we've spent in the last year and a couple projections. They have a system they use to project out what they foresee in the next, you know, in the next year, as well as then what medical inflation is doing as, you know, when they come up with the recommendations to make, you know, to make that recommendation for the committee to consider and then to recommend to the board. We can certainly give you a little, I mean, we can work on a little more depth into the, you know, into the process, if that's something the board would like to see in that process when we give you the action item. But there is a fair amount of work in their piece in the projection models, looking at what the expectation of medical inflation is, as well as a whole variety of impacts, including, one of the big pieces is large claimants for the district. The district hasn't had in the past a higher percentage or a higher number of large claimants, and that is individuals that are in excess of, their costs are in excess of $150,000, And that has been, the last couple of years, a big impact on our increases. We don't project as many of, you know, that has come down some in what we're looking at for the next year, thus the reason, as well as our fund balance, where we're at today currently. And, you know, we expect that with fund balances, with that projection, that we have enough on hand in those other plan designs to carry through and manage the medical inflation expected for the next calendar year.
That's helpful. It's helpful to hear what goes into it, so thanks for that.
Sure. And there is in the packet, the attachment on the Health and Wellness Agenda item. If you look at page 11, there is, there's a lot of data there, and I don't know if it's readily accessible, but we can make a note to plan for the next October meeting to make sure that we have a little bit more of a user-friendly guide to understanding how we priced those premium increases for January 1 of 2024.
Yeah. I think that. You know, one other thing, I'll just add this, with the Health and Wellness Committee, because of some of the complexity and whatever it looks at, it takes, you know, individuals six, eight months or so to get adjusted to an understanding and going through that data every month with the consultants. So it's helpful that we've had some consistency over the time with those on the committee so that they, when they're looking at that information, every other month or so, they see it and understand it and have the conversation.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the changes to the medical insurance rates as presented. Last up is the school maintenance project grant. Is there a motion to approve the district's application for the school maintenance project grant?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion carried to approve the district's application for the school maintenance project grant. Couple of announcements. Friday, October 14th at 7:00 a.m. will be the Financial Advisory Committee meeting. Tuesday, October 18th, oh, and that'll take place right here at O'Neill Middle School. Tuesday, October 18th at 7:00 a.m. is the Policy Committee meeting right here at O'Neill. Is this tentative? Has that been locked in, or is it still tentative?
It's still tentative because we don't have an update from IASB for our policies.
Okay. And then last up will be the Curriculum Workshop, which will take place on Monday, October 24th at 7:00 p.m., right back here in this room at O'Neill Middle School. All right. It is now time to go to closed session. The board will now meet in closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session to discuss the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purposes of the approval by the body of minutes or the semi-annual review of minutes, as mandated by Section 2.06, that's 5 ILCS, 122(c)(21).
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion carried. We will now move into closed session after a short recess. It's 8:22. Let's meet by 8:25 across the hall.